January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Ohio County Department of Education, New York. We're here by Capitol Hill at six p.m. to stand our pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Dr. Miller, would you like to kick us off on senior superintendent's information?
Yes, I'd like to start off by thanking our community and our staff, our maintenance department for all of the work they did on our unexpected extended break. It was a very challenging week, knowing that we've been off for school for Christmas and New Year's, and then five days without school was very challenging, but certainly appreciate people that understood the position that we were in. I want to applaud Karen Butine and David Crum. They went out and tried to take pictures because if you live on National Road or in the flats of Elm Grove, you can't possibly understand what we're dealing with outside, out in our outer areas. So, thank you to those people. Also, Karen released a non-traditional, or I'm sorry, a video of explanation, and I can't tell you how many compliments that we've received because people have better understanding as to where we see things and why we do the things we do. So, thank you to all of those people, and again, really appreciate the community support when we're in these challenging times. We've also distributed our non-traditional instructional day information. As I already stated, we missed five days, so now that's over. So now we have five non-traditional days before we have to start making updates. So, we've kind of laid that information out, and what it'll look like the next time, we may or may not have snow, where food sites will be distributed, and then we'll make sure that information is pushed out so that everybody's on the same page. Fantastic news that I'm super happy to share with everyone is we are in a position, and a special thank you to Raquel McLeod, Nicole Shepherd, the Espouse, and many people that work with our pre-K. Our universal pre-K programs will now be offered five days a week. We've worked into our schedules a way to meet the needs of our busy parents and their work schedules and what goes on in the homes, and we want to be able to offer these programs and these services at five days a week as opposed to four days a week. So, we've worked diligently to come up with a schedule because within a preschool world, you have to allot time for a thirty-minute duty-free lunch as well as a forty-minute planning, and in our pre-K programs, we expect them to have their rooms cleaned. So, we had to work out a lot of the details, but we know that we want to be able to meet the needs of our parents. Also, we have distributed to our board members the High County Schools' pre-K handbook and frequently asked questions and answers. So, every time a parent would have a question on our Facebook page, whether that be for weather, for pre-K, and what that looks like, Mrs. Butine has been working with our central office team to answer those questions in real time. So, we've collected all of those questions, and then we'll make those available so if people have questions, they'll go straight to the site. So, we are very happy to have our kids back. We were in several schools today, and we saw a lot of happy faces on our students and staff members, so again, I just want to thank the community for their patience.
All right, thank you, Dr. Miller. Are there any questions for Dr. Miller relating to her superintendent's information?
I'm curious a little bit about how the, and you don't have to go into it now, but how we give this whole pre-K, did we hire more people? Did we?
We've expanded, we've expanded our services. We have a minimum amount of hours, and what we have done traditionally, and since pre-K has been in place, it was a four-day program. Four days, at one time it was half-day programs, full-day programs, and we're just trying to provide consistency for our families and our collaborative partners so that we can offer those services. And we'll also have before and after care at our collaborative sites, so when people call in and that's something that they need, they'll be able to work with the collaborative sites. And again, I applaud Mrs. McLeod for the work she's done with those teachers because this is a change, but again, we want to be able to meet and exceed the needs of our parents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Moments for mission. Molly, would you like to kick us off?
Sure thing. I'm glad that we are back at school after a very nice, long Christmas break, which I'm sure was wonderful for all of the students, but I'm glad that we're back, and hopefully we can stay mostly back this week, we'll see, and the rest of the month. And our parade of champions, I see Brennan Whack this year, so I can't wait to hear all about everything that he's accomplished and celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Karen?
I'm glad also that we're back in session, and I hope that the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five school year brings a challenge to our students and staff, and that we can step up to the plate and show everybody what we're really all about in the High County Schools. I think it's one of the best school systems in the valley, so kudos to our champions, and it's great to have people come out tonight on a cold night, and I'd like to thank the school system and everybody getting the sidewalks cleared. It's great to see that they're out working and getting everything ready for other students, and welcome back.
Thank you, Andy. Andy?
Happy New Year to everybody. It's great to be back in the saddle again and having our kids attend regularly. I'm sure the parents are applauding. Yay, they're back at school, it's wonderful. We agree, we're glad to have them back. Also, it's a special day today, it's somebody's birthday in the audience, I won't mention their name, their initials are Jocelyn. We won't ask how old you are, Jocelyn.
Thank you.
I personally want to thank all these people in the front row, and there are community and schools people. I asked Dr. Miller, and they're probably saying that Garber had to make me come to a board meeting, but I think the work that these people are doing needs to be made public. I think the public needs to hear and see the people who are having a really positive effect on our students. The work that they do many times goes unnoticed. I talked to a couple of them, and one of the things that I found out is that they raised five thousand dollars, and they used that five thousand dollars to assist families. In the state of West Virginia now, there's a push to do something about student discipline. In that push, what they would like to do is have, well, it's already a place for the grades six through twelve, is to have, let's just say, I don't want to say punitive, but it is a very disciplined system, that if a student misbehaves and has a lot of issues, et cetera, they go to an alternative placement, which we have, which is working very well for our high school and middle school students. This new push, politically, is to have an alternative placement for elementary. That funding will be the responsibility of the local school district, and we are at a point right now where the state has continually cut back the funding, obviously due to decreased enrollment, but also to both scholarship and some of the priorities that our legislature and government is placing on school choice. I'm contented today, and I want the public to know, after these people speak today or whoever's going to speak, I want you to see how important having these kinds of people are to the school system. High County leads the way in that regard. We want our legislators in this area to see, instead of having alternatives, start funding for these kinds of positions that are having direct impact on our students and their families. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of you, but thank you so much for all the work that you do. And they're gonna, they're gonna present something a little bit later, and I'm looking forward to that, so, come on, you need, you can handle it, so, oh, she, who's doing it?
Kristen Mosier.
Kristen, you're all right, girl, you hit a star on your forehead, all right? All right, thank you, that's always great.
I am Jim. Bernie? I just want to compliment Karen on the, on the video about the weather and the cancellation. I thought that was very well done, and I got a lot of people actually commented that they appreciated the thought that goes into it, and the Perry Weather Service asked Mr. Jones before we started how it is, and he said it's pretty dang good, so it's kind of nice that we did something right there that we can have that kind of information at our fingertips. And then lastly, I saw on Facebook this morning, Wisdale had a little girl transfer from Florida, and had never seen snow before. We're in West Virginia.
Thank you, Bernie. Karen, was there a rifle to throw the snowball at Rick?
So weird, Nicole volunteered right away.
We could raise more than five grand.
Jocelyn, thank you for joining us on your birthday evening. We will try to be efficient with this meeting, so you can enjoy the rest of your time. Moving on to the parade of champions, Kurt Warner Award for top running back in the state of West Virginia.
My name's Coach Doc, I'm the head football coach at Willing Park High School, the athletic director. I'm here to introduce our star junior, most importantly, running back in Brennan Whack. He has won the Kurt Warner Award, which most of us are maybe not quite old enough to remember that great player from West Virginia, Southern West Virginia that went to Penn State and won a national championship with Penn State and Joe Paterno, but that award is named after him. Brennan was also the WTOV nine Player of the Year, first-team All-State. He has the rushing record for season, or yards in a season, yards in a game that he had broke three times within the season, and touchdowns in a season. Did I forget anything? He's the type of kid that would, doesn't keep track of that anyway, but obviously he's a super talented kid, but the reason he's standing here is because of how he lives his life every day between the games. His work ethic is phenomenal, both in the classroom, off the field, in the preseason, during the season. He's a leader in our school, he's a leader on our football team, he's just the perfect example of exactly what you want if you're, if you're a football coach, if you're a high school, if you're a school system. This is the type of kid that you want walking your hallways, you know, and half of my job as a high school football coach is to stop the high school party and dance after a touchdown because you see, you see the college game and the NFL game, and that kind of comes down, and that, and that's not what we're allowed to do at the high school. The biggest compliment I can give this young man is he scored thirty-one times. It's a record at our high school. He handed the ball to the official thirty-one times. That's special, that doesn't happen all the time. I've had kids score two touchdowns, and on the second touchdown, I had to say, can't do that, but not Brennan. And so, he's a blessing, he's a blessing for our school, he's a blessing to his parents. I wish I could take credit for his great behavior and the person he is, but that's because of his mom and dad and who they are and what they've done with him. I just get to enjoy him, and thankfully, I get one more year to enjoy him, and so should our, our town and our school system. Brennan Whack.
I'd just like to thank the board for recognizing me, and then I'd also like to thank my coaches and teammates that helped me a lot throughout the year. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. This is my nickname, the cheetah, all right? So, we're all gonna call him the cheetah from here on in.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Main Street Bank billboard parts.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, is John Callor here tonight? Did he make it? Okay, I didn't see him walk in. John, I want to thank him that his absence is who communicates with Mr. Saunders on the Main Street Bank competition. If you've driven through out Wheeling in the months of November and December, you have probably seen beautiful artwork by Ohio County Schools' students, and that is thanks to the relationship between Main Street Bank and Ohio County Schools. For the last several years, Main Street Bank has partnered with Ohio County Schools as well as other schools in the community to bring student artwork to life at a grand scale. We have a few artists here tonight whose work were so phenomenal, it was featured on National Road, it was featured in downtown Wheeling, out of the world size, and I also want to take a moment to recognize their teachers because it's their patience, their time, their effort that has really helped these artists hone their skills over the last few years. So, when I call your name, please come up and be curated because you're phenomenal. I'm gonna start with Bridge Street Middle School, and that is Ms. Chloe Nguyen. And her teacher, Ms. Sarah Jones. Okay, it looks like Ms. Jones brought your billboard, will you show everyone?
Oh, that's beautiful.
Tredoffia Middle School, that is Sadie Murphy. And she has her billboard as well, Main Street Bank, as he's often referred to to our kids. And Tredoffia Middle School teacher, Mrs. Stansfield. Warwood Middle School, Brooklyn Brothers. Also bringing her billboard. And Warwood Middle School art teacher, Ms. Coleman, who could not be with us tonight. And then Wheeling Middle School could also not attend tonight, but I'd like to recognize Abigail and her teacher, Mr. Scott Hughes. Thank you to Main Street Bank for not only financially supporting you guys and our art programs, but for making this a really memorable experience for our young artists, and congratulations, these were the best billboards I think I've seen yet. Thank you, congratulations.
All right, item five on our agenda personnel, Dr. Miller.
Yes, we'd like to congratulate and be sad about Joyce Jingle, who is retiring from a position as a two-hundred-day instruct instrumental chorus general music teacher assigned to Willing Park High School effective January thirtieth. Ms. Jingle has been employed with the High County Schools for forty-five years. So, we're a little sad. Jacqueline Schreiner is retiring from a position as a two-hundred-day language arts teacher assigned to Wheeling Park High School effective June thirtieth. Ms. Schreiner has been employed with the High County Schools for twenty-four years, and all other personnel as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions for Dr. Miller, personal recommendations? Karen, not a bad emotion, except personnel recommendations as the superintendent. First, second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed? All right, item six, reports, follow-up actions. CIS, communities and schools, Dr. Miller, kick us off, please.
Yes, Mr. Garber had mentioned to me at the last board meeting about inviting our community and schools liaisons, site coordinators, superheroes, superstars. Like glue fillers. So, it gave us an opportunity to actually look at all the wonderful things that you all have done to make possible for our families and, most importantly, our students. So, we invited you all to come here and share a little bit of your successes with us, and applaud you for all you do for us and for our kids. We can't, we can't, we can't be an excellent school system without filling in all those spaces, and we're able to get closer to that because of the work that you do. So, thank you very much for being here, and then I'm going to turn it over to...
Kristin.
Yes, please.
Anne Spiegel.
No kidding. Anne, stand on one foot.
I pray about some of them, can I just?
Yes. I want to ring Main Street.
Thank you.
Preston Croft, members of the board, Dr. Miller, Mr. Jones, central office staff, thank you for having us here today. We're honored to be here and represent to you about what we do with communities and schools. Communities and schools is a statewide initiative designed to address barriers to education and help students succeed both in and out of the classroom. We connect students and families with community resources, providing services like academic support, mentoring, basic needs assistance, and mental health services. By placing site coordinators in schools, CILs, CIS builds strong one-on-one relationships with students to promote attendance, improve behavior, and enhance academic performance. The program's mission is to empower students to stay in school and achieve their full potential, fostering success for individuals and communities across the state of West Virginia. So, our Ohio County Communities and Schools has eight site coordinators, and then we can reduce them if they raise their hands. We have Unique Murphy and CJ Vassessi at Willing Park High School, Abby Ponder at Bridge Street Middle School, Mike McLeod at Willing Middle, Heather Leekey at Warwood Middle School, I am at Warwood Elementary and Woodsdale Elementary. We have Claudia Donkey from Elm Grove Elementary, Jessica Stradwick from Madison Elementary, and Brooke Barton from Ritchie Elementary. So collectively, we serve four hundred and twenty students in Ohio County. We provide four hundred and seventy-five snack bags every weekend to students in the district. One of the most rewarding times for our group is around the holidays, and this year, I don't need to reference Mr. Garber, but as...
Don't worry, I mean it.
We provided, we raised twenty-five thousand dollars in donations, gift cards, and holidays, holiday assistance to families who need. We can't do that by ourselves, we need people in the community to help us do that, so that's one of the other things we do. We partner with businesses and organizations in Ohio County to help us do that. So, this year, we partnered with over fifty local businesses and organizations in Ohio County to make this happen. We wanted to share some other exciting goals we have for 2025, so I am gonna hand the mic over to Ms. Unique so she can talk about some exciting things planned for Willing Park. So, I wasn't supposed to give a speech, and somehow I'm still here. Following what Mr. Garber and obviously Kristen said, we do want to thank you guys and our community members for all the things that you do and the positions that you guys have put us in to be able to help our students and our staff, because we don't leave our staff out, we definitely provide support to them as well. We do have some great things planned each one of us, and I can't list all the things. We do have a text thread, and it is quite extensive, as we learned today, and we're sending quickly all the things that we're all doing at our schools today. But two of the things that we definitely want to share, one of them being our HBCU trip, which we are gonna do for the second year in a row, partnering with the YWCA, Ron Scott, and then several community partners, to make sure that this trip happens for our high schools, our high school students. Right now, we have forty-two students in our Black Student Union, and we are going to take our seniors and our juniors first, and then as we go through that list, we will start to take the sophomores and freshmen as well. Eventually, everyone will get the chance because we do, we're hopefully gonna do this every single year, but we're definitely doing it this year, which I'm super excited for, it will happen during spring break. To add on to that, which I didn't get to tell Mr. Jones today, we received, no, just to add on to this, I didn't get to tell him earlier...
I love being told that.
Yes, and not to make you nervous, but one of the really exciting things that we just got some news on is the NAACP has offered to pay for all forty-two of our students to be youth members, so that's gonna be free to them, and then in addition to that, they have invited us to go to North Carolina at some point in the summer, completely paid for, for the R kids who are wanting to attend, to attend the youth NAACP convention, and there the kids will stay, I think until weekend, they will stay, and they will get to learn and experience all things NAACP, and they'll get to mingle and meet with other kids from around the country, which is super exciting, and it's a great opportunity for them, and again, it's completely free, so that's super exciting, so I hope that was good news. In addition to that, we talked this morning about stories that we wanted to share, and I'm sure if any of the other staff members would like to share, they can, but one of the biggest, I guess the most impactful stories that I really wanted to share was something that happened between me and Kristi Painter earlier this year. So, something that often happens, and I don't think that if you're not a community and school site coordinator, or you're not directly working with us, you wouldn't probably pick up on this, but one of the things that often happens is kids have no idea what we do here. And so, what happened to me earlier this school year was a student, he was in my office, and he said, hey, Ms. Unique, what do you do here? What's your role? I don't understand. So, I explained it to him, and he was like, oh, okay, that's pretty cool, I probably wouldn't need that, and then he went on about his day, and so did I, because he's not the typical kid that I would talk to. You know, he plays a sport, he's a great, he's a great academic student, not really someone who probably would be hanging out in my office every, you know, every day, talking to me and getting advice or different things from me. What he didn't expect and what I didn't expect is, a week later, he would be in my office, and he would be going through something, and I honestly was speechless, which doesn't happen often, if you know me. So, a week later, this kid comes into my room, and he is distraught, and, and I was distraught because he was distraught, and he's, he's not that kind of kid, and he says, I left home this morning, and there's an eviction notice on my door, and my mom's listening to mom, and I don't know what we're gonna do, and I don't want to ask her because I don't think she knows what we're gonna do. And he said, I don't even know why I'm here, and he apologized to me about ten times, and he said, I don't even know if you could help me, I don't know if this is something you do, and I stopped him, and I said, actually, this is exactly what I do, and I explained to him, you know, how West Virginia law works and how evictions work, and of course, he's looking at me like he still doesn't even know what I'm talking about, which is completely fine. Sometimes I don't know what I'm talking about, just kidding, just kidding. But I explained to him how evictions work, and I said to him, it's gonna be fine, you know, you're not gonna get kicked out tomorrow, which is what he thought. And so, I came here on one of our meeting days with Raquel, Leah, and Nicole, and I said to my team, to the CIS team, I need help, I've reached out to several resources, they just don't have enough money to help me cover this family's rent. And all of them immediately were like, well, call this place, call this place, call this place, and Kristen thankfully had one that was readily available, and we contacted her contact, who was amazing, but doesn't, they want to remain anonymous, and they said, sure, I'll email you this information, I'll have it to you tomorrow. And lo and behold, they did, so I went back to school the next day, and I pulled him in my office, and I said, hey, I said, I have something for you, let's sit down and talk, and we had a conversation, and, because I had told him to go home and, and ask his mom more questions, I just wanted to know, not that it was my business, but I wanted to make sure that I wasn't overstepping or that I didn't make her feel uncomfortable by taking care of this situation. And basically, he explained to me that the reason the mom didn't have the money to cover the rent was because she had to decide, am I gonna pay the rent this month, or am I gonna cover the youngest son's football expenses? And I said, that is unfortunate that she had to choose between paying her rent or choosing to cover his football expenses, but she chose the football expenses, and to some people, that might be crazy, why would you do that? But to me, or to any of the moms in the room with the dads, you're gonna say, well, you know what, that makes sense, she chose to do something that made him happy, and that she was gonna figure the rest out later. And not in her defense, she was gonna figure it out, but it was just gonna be a lot for her. And so thankfully, with the help of Kristen and her community partner, we were able to cover that person's rent, and then the mom didn't have to take that paycheck that she was gonna get and cover that rent, and she was able to take care of Christmas, which was fantastic. And so those are just some of the things that happen, and often, you know, anybody in this room, or any teachers not in this room, sometimes we overlook the kids who are academically great, or in a sport in their grade, or they do come from, you know, wealthier families, which families who are better off financially, and we don't think that they're struggling, or we don't think to ask if they're struggling, and one of the best things about communities and schools is, we don't, we don't always, we're not perfect, we make mistakes as well, but we don't really discriminate in that aspect, we ask everybody if they're okay. We check in with everybody, and not to say that, you know, our other staff members and our other colleagues don't, it's just that we have more time to do that, and I think that's one of the best things about communities and schools, and one thing that I wish we had time to talk about for six hours, because I would, trust me, but I think that it definitely highlights our job, and I think that it, that story tells you why we're here to do what we do, and like I said, I know they have a million other stories to share, but that was just one that we wanted to make sure that you guys got to hear tonight. So, thank you, and communities and schools, thanks, and, and we thank you, because there are eight of us now, which is insane, there used to just be one, two, and three, and now there are eight of us, and I hope we continue to grow, and I look forward to adding more people to the team if, you know, if that ever happens in the future. Wink, wink, that's not true.
Unique, don't go to the counter, I have a question for you, I actually have a situation...
I don't have my glasses on, I can't see.
You're not missing anything. So, in addition to this board, we have the High County Schools Foundation, and historically it has been used for scholarships, but it's a nonprofit corporation, it can do far more than that, so for the example that you just gave, in fact, we have a benefactor that's going to join us this Friday, a very...
But I think that it definitely highlights our job, and I think that it, that story tells you why we're here to do what we do. And like I said, I know they have a million other stories to share, but that was just one that we wanted to make sure that you guys got to hear tonight. So thank you, and communities and schools, thanks, you. And we thank you because there are eight of us now, which is insane. There used to just be one, two, and three, and now there are eight of us, and I hope we continue to grow. And I look forward to adding more people to the team if, you know, if that ever happens in the future.
Unique, come, come get down. I have a question for you. Actually, I just
I don't have my glasses on. I can't see.
You're not missing anything. So in addition to this board, we have the Ohio County Schools Foundation. And historically, it has been used for scholarships, but it's a nonprofit corporation. It can do far more than that. So for the example that you just gave, in fact, we have a benefactor that's going to join us this Friday. A very gentle man, and he just says, like, "I want to help people." That's what he wants to do. And we should talk collectively on saying, "Let's find and create a fund within the Ohio County Foundation, raise money for that independently so that you have an immediate resource for emergency situations."
That would be phenomenal. That would be phenomenal for us, because I think, and we don't, you know, there are a million things, but I think sometimes we do sit around, that's twenty-five thousand dollars that we raised as a whole. I mean, in the moment, we were all like, "How are we going to pay for this, this, and this?" And then, you know, we made a way, but to have something readily available for us, especially in those situations, would be awesome. Because if that person hadn't reached out, I really don't know what we would have done for that. So thank you for that.
Well, just someone within your group needs to be a point person to speak with me.
Raquel.
Okay.
Okay, Raquel.
Me.
What other counties have CIS? I mean, to the extent that we have, and is there a statewide coordination of initiatives and benefits? And, you know, how do you sync with the rest of the state?
Yeah, so there are, there, so I think we in this area, we're the ones with the most, correct? Okay, just making sure I'm right. So we have the most in this, in the northern panhandle. Brook County, Marshall County, Tyler, Wetzel, they're all over the place, communities and schools. It's actually nationwide, so they're quite literally everywhere. We just happen to have the highest number of CIS in this area, which is phenomenal. And I forgot to second Barbara's question.
Now, I just want to know how do you sync the
Oh, I have the data. Thank you. So we do, I mean, it feels like we're there like every other month, but we do like these like convention meetings with our regional specialists who oversees all of us. And we meet in Morgantown, or we travel to Charleston every couple of months, every couple of weeks, it feels like sometimes. And we'll get together and we'll have conversations about what we're doing, what other places are doing, how we can incorporate those into our counties. We'll talk about like needs that we have or resources that we wish we had, and then how we can get access to those things for our students, our families, our schools, and our staff as well. Oh, yeah, and then we have a monthly meeting here at the board office actually. Yes, with our, with Raquel, Leah, Nicole, and our state regional specialist, who actually just changed because ours left us before Christmas break, so we got a new, we got a temporary one. But we meet with him, with them over Zoom. And we just kind of talk about individually what each of our schools, our site coordinators are doing, what we should be doing, what we need to be doing in the future, how we can achieve different goals. We share with them small details, big details, like what we have planned. They give us ideas and examples of how we can make our schools better places. But usually, I mean, you know, Ohio County is doing really well. So usually, when we're on with, you know, Zach Hughes, our regional specialist, we would share things, and he would be like, "I'm going to share this with this county." So like our giving tree has been one of the most phenomenal things that we have ever, that communities and schools has ever had. And so they like to talk about that a lot. So usually, when we go to these conventions or these conferences, they are using us as an example, which is really great, because we're one of the newest, the newest set of CIS in the state. So not that we're late to the game, but we are definitely killing.
Unique, how many counties in the state have the communities?
All of them.
That was one of the things I was concerned about.
Yeah, yeah, we're there, and we are definitely setting a tone in that panhandle. You have, we'll have all that information.
Well, we want to be the leader in the state, so let's set the example.
Any other questions?
Very none. Thank you very much, Kristen. Thank you for your work. Thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Group picture.
Thank you.
How do you get anything done? Are you pleased or troubled? Is that Friday? Friday, you had your
Okay, moving on.
Thanks, guys.
You got that new safety?
Yes, we're safe.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, so we're still waiting on our metal detectors. I need to reach out and see where they are. They should be here any time. So once those come and get set up, we have finally, after an entire semester, got our closed campus signs that are very important for a couple of situations that we've had in the past that you have to have posted on your sit-rooms as a closed campus in order to prosecute somebody that would come onto your campus that we don't want. So we finally got those. We'll get those delivered. And lastly, our, as Mr. Arty mentioned, our weather app, our weather, the weather service is so far has been phenomenal. They've been spot on just about everything. And the best part about it is right from the app, you can message a live meteorologist, and in about five minutes, they will get right back with the forecast that they just read and predicted. So instead of reading big things that are going to happen over the next twelve hours, he gives us what we should expect in real time. And so far, it's been right on the spot with ice. We thought we had some concerns with potential power outages on the fur, and when I emailed him, he said, or texted him, he said, "No, the snow is going to be light in nature. You will not have any power issues," and he was right. He gave us just about the right snowfall. And everything is right at our fingertips, so I've been really happy with that. Hope it continues on as we continue to have to make these decisions for delays and cancellations.
Mr. Jones, the weather tomorrow morning is calling for possible close air wind chill.
You know, I wanted to mention before, not only do we have this meteorologist, there's like fifteen hundred at Park that send me their outlook. And we have a lot of teachers that send me their thoughts, their meteorology. So I've already had probably fifty people reach out to let us know that it's going to be frigid tomorrow. There has not been a warning released, which is nice to have. However, even if, you know, tomorrow's going to be like minus two, real feel in the morning, and then a few hours after the buses start picking up kids, it will raise in four or five degrees, which doesn't seem like a lot, because you combine that two-hour delay, when you combine a few degrees difference with light, where bus drivers could see potential ice, and it makes a big difference mentally for people to not be standing in that kind of temperature in that dark. But we're going to talk after this meeting and decide about tomorrow. There are already some school districts closed for it. So we're going to talk and go from there, but it does make it tough when it's that cold.
Yeah, I'm working the academic fair tomorrow at Steamboat, and I was just curious how that was going to work. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Uh huh, thank you. Any other questions for Rick on school safety? Very none. We move on to bid the child nutrition food truck.
We had a bid for a child nutrition food truck on December twenty-third, twenty-four, eleven a.m. Mr. Crum and myself were in attendance, and the winning bid was Whiteside of St. Clairsville in the amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars in a motion that was needed for the approval.
All right, I have a motion to accept the bid of Whiteside Chevrolet at ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for a food truck.
A motion.
I have a motion of a second.
I'll second.
All right, I got first and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter?
What was the only bid you got?
Yeah, so it was only one bid?
Only, only, only the one bid received, and, you know, specialized product.
What is a food truck?
It carries
So it's refrigerated?
Child nutrition meals from Willing Park High School to all of the other schools, since we have centralized kitchen.
So it's ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars because it's refrigerated? Like what's specialized, specifically specialized about it?
It's not refrigerated, but the panels and stuff on the inside are what's approved by the food industry. So we have four food trucks, one of which could go at any time. I always have a spare, so if there's one down, there are a food truck that's available to use it. So this is to get ahead of the game before we're left without one that we can't transport the food. Once food is used in it, and that's what this purpose is for, it can't be used for anything else. So
The truck can't be?
Correct.
Within the school system, meaning like you can only use it to transport food?
Correct.
Yeah. So we have one that's about to go down, and that's why we have this one?
Yes.
Is it similar price to what we normally pay?
I mean, it's been a while since we've had to put out a bid for one. And of course, with the past four years, it's gone up significantly, but so has everything else in life. So, I mean, it's not, it's not anything that we can, you know, it's, it's the, it's what, it's the same bid that we've put out the past few years. I would go past a couple of times we've done it, but it's only been every, about every five years or so.
How does this compare to ones that we've purchased in the past in terms of prices?
It's increased. I have no exact number.
I would say that when you just have the one bid, it's hard to know if you're getting a good deal.
It's just such a specialized product. I mean, and there's not going to be a whole lot of, there's not going to be a whole lot of close dealerships that are going to be able to fit this need, so.
So we had a, we looked at a similar one that is a base model without the additional upgrades and stuff. I want to say it was, what, ninety thousand?
I think so.
Without the proper panels and other stuff needed for the food and nutrition. So this bid seems to be well within a couple of other quotes that we had for a similar truck, but without all the extras that this one does because it's needed for food and nutrition.
Whiteside has actually been a winning bidder in the past few times, so.
Any other questions?
Bernie?
Nope.
Andy?
No, sir.
Andy? All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify my saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you over and I have a six-point-four logistic company proposal. Dr. Miller and Mrs. Hyder.
You want me to start? Okay. So we've been looking at a variety of logistics companies over the past few months, I guess I would say. And Dr. Miller circulated those proposals to the board. One was Prismatic, one was CISO, C-E-S-O. One was from Edgelog, and then Hop Skip Drive slash Route Wise AI was a new one that had just reached out to Mr. Crum to provide their proposal as well. The start time committee worked to kind of gather data on each of those companies to put together to, for the board to discuss. So I circulated some notes based on that. Basically, so Prismatic would, Prismatic, CISO, and Edgelog kind of provides somewhat similar services, I would say. Prismatic was going to be able to look at our bus lengths, our bus routes, our bus runs, and was going to provide us with at least three scenarios. We had pushed out a scope of work to these companies where we wanted to have at least three scenarios brought back to us of different options with two goals in mind. One, to make sure that our bus routes are as efficient as they can be just for a cost, from a cost savings perspective and being good stewards of the county's money and of our buses and things like that. And then additionally, to see if we would be able to move the high school start time later in the morning, like we've been talking about for a while now. And for them to be able to look at it and tell us, you know, whether we could do it with, you know, what kind of disruption that would cause to other schools, what, how many buses we might need, et cetera. So we had the, all three of the quotes, Prismatic brought us. Their timing was about eight to ten weeks, they said, to bring something back. They said they'd give us three scenarios. One, just a high school change. One, they would kind of look at what Edgelog had done before, but take it down a little bit more granularly. And then the third option, they could give us something that's just totally, potentially totally different from what we have seen before to see if we can get this done. CISO, similar, where they would review all the routes. They would get an idea for what our current schedule schedules are. They would provide us status updates, which was a real benefit, I thought, to that particular proposal. They had people trained in Edgelog, but they also had licenses for other software. They would, in fact, take our routes all the way down, kind of the base level, like we've talked about before, and start from scratch if that was what was needed. They called it blank slate routing, and that would be included in their price that they brought to us. They said they might build new routes. They would take the GPS data and do the load data. They'd look at individual data, individual stops and things like that in building those routes. And they would be able to work with a variety of different softwares, which was a benefit, I think, to the CISO and work with certain things that we already have in our school system. Edgelog, we, they provided us with a, their proposal a little while ago, and they didn't make any changes to it based on the scope of work document that we put out. They said they would do a run optimization as well as route optimization, which would be taking new runs and moving them around versus rebuilding runs that exist. They also would provide three routes, or three options for their price. And then if we wanted additional alternatives to that, there would be additional charge for that. So all three of those had agreed to basically give us routes in like a turnkey fashion, like Mr. Crum had talked about at the last meeting. The prices, I don't have those in front of me right now. Do you have those in front of you, Dr. Miller, the prices for those three? Then the fourth one, I guess we can get to the prices. The fourth one was Top Skip Drive, and they use an AI. It's called Route Wise AI. They have worked with over six hundred districts. They have a customized platform. They're, they use an AI algorithm that would evaluate, they said, millions of different scenarios. Their cost proposal covers a twelve-month contract. And they indicated that because they use AI, and they're the only company that does use AI, that they would be able to basically spit out as many different change proposals as we wanted them to based on varying factors, which is something that we've talked about quite a bit in terms of, you know, as we look into this idea of a logistics company and of maybe trying to shift around what time schools start, it's tough to be stuck with just a couple of scenarios without having to pay additional money. Whereas they said, included in their contract price is basically as many different scenarios as we can throw their way, they can spit something right back out. So those were the four, and that's the information that the, that we gleaned from conversations with each of them. Andy, do you have anything to add to that based on?
Yeah, I wrote down the prices for each of the vendors. Prismatic was somewhere between thirty-eight thousand, three ninety-five, forty-seven thousand, one seventy-five, depending upon how expensive we want them to go. CISO was nineteen thousand eight hundred. Edgelog, I believe we said they were twenty-five. And Hop Skip Drive Route Wise was thirty thousand. The thing that I was impressed with the most, and a couple of our members on the committee also said this, that the Hop Skip, I have a hard time saying that seriously. Hop Skip Drive, they offered probably the most intriguing option because they just have AI do it. In other words, they say, "Okay, here's the, here's the statistics." They feed the information into the computer, let AI figure it out, and they spit you out what they think would be viable. And we may say to them, "That's not what we wanted. Okay, we'll do it again." So that was one of the main things that I thought that they offered, much more options. The other thing that I liked about them was they would stay with us for an entire year to work through any of the issues that we were having. And to me, that's a commitment that I appreciate. So that was, that was my biggest thing. Thank you.
If I could add, that Hop Skip Drive has come back and with their amount, and they, I believe it's twenty-four seven fifty, with the understanding that we would provide them the opportunity to do a case study in Ohio County schools. So that has also changed.
And Mr. Crum, you spoke with some, one of the references that they provide?
Yes, I spoke with one of the references from the Denver area that seemed to be very pleased with all the things. Now they are, or at least one of the people working with them is from the Denver area. It's part of where they came from. I also reached out to three other I also reached out to three other references that they had given us on Friday, left messages. I reached out again today, left messages. Um, I also sent emails, uh, to each of the other three today. I have not heard anything back yet from the other three. I do know one of the other three was actually working with, um, the Route Wise AI and the Hop Skip Drive. You know, as I was trying to reach out to that, uh, school system. So as of right now, I've only been able to speak with the one from the Denver area. There was somebody from the Littleton, which is south of Denver, somebody from Macon, Georgia, and somebody from Atlanta, Georgia. So definitely school systems that are quite a bit bigger and probably has more things to, to work with than what we have. Um, they also will work with our, you know, our special needs routes and the individual McKinney Vento. Uh, that was one of the things that, uh, the company from Denver, the local school system from Denver talked about was, you know, we have students that we have to transport from here to sometimes Marshall County, you know, Roke County, depending on where their home base is, their home school is, um, the circumstances, like we had one last year that we brought from Martin's Ferry to Madison, um, because of the circumstances. Uh, so they also work with those kinds of things and seeing what would be the optimal way of getting them where they need to go.
If I recall, David, I think was that Denver district that saved five hundred thousand dollars by optimizing routes?
They did have savings. Um, I don't remember the exact number.
I think that's accurate. Yeah. So I think that's one of the things that we've talked about as a board that's, um, an added benefit in all this. Even if we don't end up making a start time change or don't think that that can work, uh, you know, we could potentially save a lot more than the twenty-five thousand dollars that we are putting into this initial attempt to try to optimize and see what we can do.
Twenty-four seven fifty.
Thank you. Yes. That's an important distinction, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so I mean, my impression, I think, Andy, you seem like you agree. I really like the AI option the best because I think it offers us the most flexibility. Um, it's a little bit more than the CISO, um, but less than the other two at the twenty-four seven fifty. Um, and it just seemed like it was going to give us a lot of flexibility. And I also really like that they'll work with us for twelve months. And the person that we spoke to indicated, you know, you can come back at Christmas and say, hey, our, our enrollment numbers changed. So it doesn't even have to be necessarily related to, are we going to switch the, uh, start time? But hey, our enrollment numbers changed at these schools. Can you plug in some new numbers and have it spit back out, you know, whether we should make any changes? And I, that to me is just huge. I think that's, um, in terms of being as efficient as we can be. Everyone knows there's not a lot of extra bus drivers out there. Um, it just seemed like a really good.
Yeah, I know, just because they were wanting to run in limited scenarios for us. I mean, we could sit there all day with them and just change and change.
Yep.
Well, and that was one of the challenges with some of the prior vendors is every time it was five grand to run something. And so there's, there's significant value to just continuing to plug, play until you come up with the optimal route.
And the day, as far as if after the, say we do Hop Skip Drive, I just want to say that. Sounded fun, sounded fun. Yeah. Say, you go down, at, at, at the end when they present their proposal or their solution, are they willing to come in and meet with us? Meet with the public? I mean, what's their value there?
Mm-hmm. Okay, they did talk to us about this. Let's see. I didn't write in my notes. Kim, do you remember what they said about?
Um, February twenty-eighth, they could have preliminary findings.
Correct.
It would provide a final report on March fourteenth and then April to December, we'd be able to provide ongoing support. So I think after we would receive information of what that report would look like, I'm guessing we would go and share that information to all stakeholders, schools and bailiffs. It could look like.
Yeah. I, I think it would be helpful if they, I can see where I'm made about this, right? So I think it would be very helpful for them to have some onsite. They could honestly throw it up there and show, here's how, see how it works. I, I think it's pretty cool, actually.
I think that would be a question to go back and just double check with them all because I know specifically some of the others said that they would come here onsite and do a couple visits and stuff. Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
I don't have that in my notes, Dave.
What the answer to that question was. We spoke with several that night.
They said they'd be stay with us whenever that meant.
Correct.
You know, if they meant hands, um, hands on face to face, I'm not sure.
Yep, I agree. Some of the others did specifically say whether they would do that or that over Zoom. Um, but I think that would be something that we could talk to them about. And they have, um, like, they've worked, this company in the past, before they started their AI side of things. They've worked with school districts just struggling with driver shortage to help them try to figure out, um, ways to deal with that. Um, so like in the, the, um, PowerPoint that they sent us, they showed all these statistics for ways that they've helped districts reduce their transportation costs and, and deal with things like that. And so they do have, it seemed to me, experience in just dealing with changes within school systems and, and uh, I think they'd be able to offer some good, he, he offered some good advice on, when we were on the phone with them, like, okay, well, you know, when you talk to your community, you know, you think about these things, think about those things. So I think they do seem to have some experience when it comes to just basic change within, uh, a school system. And most of their employees, if I remember correctly, come out of school systems. Is that true, David?
Yes, that's correct.
So they have an understanding of just how, you know, of a school system, transportation works and a lot of just the idiosyncrasies that are, that go along with that, that maybe people in the private sector don't necessarily have. Um, the guy who presented, or who answered our questions, I think, came out of like FedEx or something like that, which I thought was also really good because they obviously deal with routes and changing routes all the time. So he, he brought that experience and then the other people within the company brought the more like public school system related experience. So I liked them. I would say that was my, that would be a recommendation to the board. Molly, remember that one?
David, was that your preferred vendor of the groups we've talked to?
They're the only one that works with the AI component and was willing to do the unlimited, uh, options and variations. Uh, now with that being said, it would not be something that, if I'm understanding things correctly, would not replace Edgelog. We would still use Edgelog as doing the bus, um, they work with Edgelog, also have worked with Edgelog. We would pull information from Edgelog into their system as well as the spreadsheet Excel information that would come out of the LEVIS two point O in this case. Um, the students to see what would work best and give us the most options. Uh, they were all provided with a spreadsheet that showed down the times of our schools and what kind of differences we had throughout our county. Um, so I know whoever we decide to move forward with, we would continue to give that information and work through, uh, the little tweaks, um, and options that we would have. Did they say they'd be able to pull without interface costs? So they'll use our login to pull from Edgelog? Does that come on the backend and so you can have that from interface? Okay.
Andy, was that your preferred vendor as you went through that process?
Uh, I, I, I'm seeing things through the same lens as Dave and Molly. I think that, uh, is our best option.
So, um, would we like to do a motion this evening to, um, hire these guys based on the revised price provided? They will announce a visit?
Sounds good. I, I would make that motion.
Um, I have a second.
I have a first and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Andy, you have any thoughts on that you'd like to share? Okay, so we have a first and a second. Uh, no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The post, motion passed. That's great. Uh, consent agenda, um, pull off paid bills? Or anybody else, like anything pulled off other than paid bills? Hearing none. Bernie, do you have any paid bills that were there?
Uh, I did just have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, Inspire Energy, eleven thousand, check number two-two-two-three-six-nine. Is that gas? Correct. So then underneath we have not near gas company. Is that, was that just the, uh, transition fees on top of that?
That's new, we're going to have purchasing of gas.
Perfect. Okay. And then on physicals, that's why we have Med Express, we have Willem Hospital. Do we have a contract with one vendor to do all employee physicals? Okay, that, that's all. I just think maybe it might be an opportunity to get a better rate. I'm sure it would be a lot of physicals.
Thank you. Andy, you have any?
No, sir.
Um, I have a few if I could.
Yeah.
Um, the Bowles Rice, check, uh, what is it? Check two-two-two-three-eight-three. Um, was that for Bondwork, Sue?
It was not. Um, I've been giving you a presentation that, well, some of them will just come and give presentations.
I don't know. All right, could you, could you let me know? Just send me the invoice. I just want to see the narrative. Um, and then Education Logistics Inc., two-two-two-four-three-six, return remote services. Um, is that just an annual fee, the ten thousand nine seventy-nine?
That's Edgelog.
Yeah, I figured it was. And that's every year. And what are they going for the ten thousand?
That's the, that's the interface system. That, that's our yearly interface.
What, what number is that? Uh, that's check two-two-two-four-three-six. And the description is referring remote services, one eighteen oh one, one eighteen to one seventeen twenty-six.
Yeah, that's for working with us to work through all the LEVIS two point O stuff, um, that we work with, trying to get everything to work properly with the addresses, with, uh, Dr. Riddle and Mr. Bell and the spreadsheets and stuff that they pull. Any questions that we may have in working through everything? But that's, yeah, part of the yearly, um, renewal.
Okay. Is that one, Andy?
Uh, let's see. Um, the only one that I had in addition to those was the Hatch Inc., Student Services Pre-K Literacy for a hundred fifty-four thousand six thirty-four. Is that the one that we use, have used in the past, that same curriculum?
That is act, is actually a new curriculum.
Okay.
And it is, um, not just for pre-k. It'll be used in all of our pre-k's daily. It will also be used with our, um, special education classes and our interventionist for our, um, MTSS time. And it is another way to build in that background and foundation of the phonics and phonetic awareness.
Okay, so it's like a reading base program?
Yes.
Okay, so we, is, we're just using it for the first time?
Yes.
Okay.
And that includes the training. They are going to train all of the pre-k teachers and aides, as well as our interventionists and special education teachers. Um, we were supposed to do it Friday, January tenth, but the stuff didn't help us. So, yeah.
Okay.
That's what that for me.
And that's the annual fee for that?
No, that, those, so that's to purchase the kits.
Okay.
And the kits are, uh, non-consumable. They will stay within the classrooms.
Good. That's all. Thank you.
All right. So consent agenda, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, agenda items seven dot one through seven dot five? I have a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, as audience. There were no delegations. Uh, Molly, you want to kick us off with board member comments?
Um, sure. Thank you, everyone, for all that you've been doing throughout the difficult snow and ice and weather predicting that we've been doing. I know that that's hard to figure out what to do. So thanks for all of the good time that you spend. I know Mr. Crum's probably out there and on godly hours driving around checking roads, barely sleeping. So, um, thank you for that. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Anne?
Uh, just the same thing goes here for, I know over the years of working with the county, the snow is, especially up at Park. Like you say, up at Park, you, you got ten feet downtown, you got nine, or nothing, I'm sorry, nine.
Yeah.
You have nothing downtown. People don't realize, uh, what, how much snow they get up on that hill. And, and it is a great job to clear that parking lots, the, the whole thing. West Liberty gets it. West Liberty gets it really bad, so thank you.
And if I might be able to say, you know, the custodians go out there on weekends also. I mean, Liz and JP have helped get some pictures along the way. Chris Kayler, you know, when he heads, he actually lives out in the West Liberty area, so he'll drive a couple side roads and stuff and send in some pictures. Yeah, they come in on their weekends and stuff. We wouldn't have been able to have school today if we didn't have Chris and Chuck that came in and spent all day yesterday. You know, plowing, uh, the parking lots that we had throughout the county and the custodians that were out making sure that the sidewalks were clear and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, it truly is a, a team effort through everybody that has to have a school, from the custodians, the maintenance mechanics, to Molly and Donnie and Liz and Chris. It just, you know, we work as well as we can to make sure we can have school if at all possible.
Thank you. Thank everybody for us. I mean, we really, uh, it, it is a big job. And some of the equipment's not the greatest that, that we do have. And, and out there in that cold and it, it is. I mean, it's, people just don't know, like, what we deal with. My roads, I, I live out towards West Liberty and my roads weren't even done and it was like, you know, they show on TV and I'm like, huh, come look at my road. So thank, thank you to everybody.
We have four trucks that we can have plows on.
Oh, great.
You'll see my truck out in the parking lot has a plow on it and then three other trucks. And I forgot to mention Ed and Laura and Chris Palachetti also help out quite a bit with plowing to give us the best opportunity of having school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Now, Andy?
Um, just, just a reminder that high K schools no longer just worries about academics. We have to worry about the whole job. And today was a, a great reminder of that. Uh, when we see, uh, what it takes and some of the issues that our, our teachers and our staff have to deal with to help kids, it's, it's almost unbelievable. And, uh, I just sincerely pray to God and I hope that we can continue to fund those positions for the community and school liaisons because they play such a vital role in helping, uh, with the success of our students. And again, Dave, thank you so much. And please tell those wonderful people that the board appreciates all the work that they do for high K schools. It's outstanding. Thank you.
Any Sandy, Bernie?
Yeah, exactly what everybody else said about, you know, good job on that. Snow removal, snow management, uh, it was quite good.
With all of those prior comments as well, Bernie, we're not even halfway through Chandler, Bernie. Uh, future meetings, Monday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five will be a regular meeting here at the board office at six P.M. Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-five will be a regular meeting at six P.M. here at the board office. And then Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five will be a regular meeting at the board office at six P.M. For being the further business for the board, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh eight.